Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Thursday, July 20th. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the State Bar of California. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. We have both members of the Board and hopefully members of the public who will be participating electronically either by video or phone. I would ask the secretary to please take a roll.
Bratton, not present. Buena Ventura?
President.
Chen, not present. Cisneros?
Here.
Duran?
Present.
Good, not present. Noel?
Yes.
Shelby?
Present.
Soell?
Trustee Soell is in the building. We'll be right back.
Stallings?
Present.
Tony?
Present.
Trejo?
Present.
You have a call.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. If you are participating in this meeting remotely and you would care to bring to the secretary's attention that you would like to speak during public comment, which is the next portion of our agenda, you may do so by using the raise hand function on your Zoom. That is at the middle of your toolbar on the bottom. If you are participating by telephone, you can do that by using the star nine function. I'm going to move us into public comment next. I'm going to ask the secretary if we have a sense of how many people are in the queue to speak. So if you are in the queue and you would like to speak during public comment, if I could ask you to please raise your hand at this time, trying to get a sense of how many people we have to see whether I need to adjust the allotted time per speaker to make sure that we get through our agenda in a timely fashion today.
We currently have five members of the public interested in addressing the Board.
Okay.
And then, in addition to one-
To the folks who signed up ahead of time.
One person who signed up in advance is remote and the other person is here in person.
Wonderful. Okay. With that, then, we will keep to our customary three minutes for speaker. Thank you to all of you who have joined us today. We've got a very full agenda. Hope to move through it in an efficient manner, but of course, we are anxious and eager to listen to everyone who will be presenting to the Board, including our very hardworking staff. So with that, I would like to recognize first the member of the public in the room who wishes to speak. Madam Secretary, will you please tell us who that is?
Claire Solot.
Hello, Ms. Solot. Long time no see.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Thank you. Just want you to know that you can hear me well enough.
Probably need to put the mic closer to you.
And also-
Chair.
Thank you. Is that better?
Little bit better, yes.
You'll learn in a moment why I'm asking so many questions about your ability to hear me. My name is Claire Solot and I am the co-founder of Legal Service Funders Network. I am also a disabled attorney. Three and a half years ago, I became deaf on my left side due to a condition known as sudden sensory neural hearing loss. In 2020, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and the delay of the July California bar exam, we created the LSFN Public Interest Bar Fellowship. To date, we have 114 fellows, over 50 different legal service organizations involved, as well as over a dozen funders.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Please speak.
The LSFN respectfully requests that the four following items be considered by the Board of Trustees in concert as they have overlapping impact. Number one, changes to bar exam fees and reciprocity. Number two, changes to accommodation procedures. Number three, additional methods of licensure. And number four, reducing the number of sites, shifting to new locations, and making day two remote. The State Bar has a unique and exciting opportunity. By looking at these issues in unison, it can not only remedy its financial situation, California will be able to join other jurisdictions that offer multiple methods of licensure while increasing attorney diversity and access to justice. Our written public comment, which the LSFN will submit soon, provides robust details and data. Today, I'd like to share a few highlights. Licensing fees in jurisdictions such as the Providence of Ontario, Canada, that offer licensure via supervised practice and evaluation, which can in fact include an exam and does, more than cover the administrative costs. Ontario licenses approximately 2,500 attorneys each year and they are able to find supervised practice positions despite Ontario having less than a third of the number of attorneys as California. Because these fees include prep for exams, they are all-in fees. As a result, it costs the examinees far less. Applicants are able to earn salaries during their period of supervised practice and most employers choose to cover the articling fee as a result. Reports of misconduct for new attorneys involved in supervised practice programs are below those for attorneys who become licensed solely by exam. Allowing out-of-state attorneys to waive in, known as reciprocity or committee, would result in a loss of more than $3 million in exam fees. The State Bar is rightfully looking at its finances and seeking ways to reduce the costs associated with attorney licensure. Increasing exam fees and reducing costs on its face seems like a reasonable option. However, the steep fee increases proposed in changes to testing site venues and modes will have a disparate impact on low-income and disabled examinees. As a result, the proposed changes are unacceptable and unjust. Offering an alternative pathway to licensure will reduce administrative exam costs, increase State Bar revenue-
Ms. Solot, I apologize for interrupting you, but your time has expired. I noticed that we were having some technical difficulties getting you mic'd up at the beginning, so without objection from the Board, if you could wrap up your comments in the next 45 seconds to a minute, we'd love to hear what you have to say-
Happy to do so.
And I'll have something to say after that. Thank you.
Let me just catch my pace so that I make sure that I'm speaking clearly. Offering an alternative method of licensure to reduce administrative exam costs, increase State Bar revenue, provide a proven licensure alternative that does in fact confirm minimum competency and reduces the socioeconomic and able-bodied biases that impact examinees' experiences and their bar results. It is for these reasons that the LSFN respectfully asks that the Board of Trustees recommends to the California Supreme Court that an alternative method of licensure pilot commences in Q1 of 2024 and that notification be sent to all qualified participants prior to the deadline for registering for the February 2024 California bar exam. Number two, exam fees increase no more than 8% for 2024 for all examinees and reciprocity for out-of-state attorneys should not be recommended at this time. Number three, exam venues remain as-is for 2024 and the administration of the exam remain fully in person. And number four, changes to the accommodation process should be reviewed further before-
Thank you, Ms. Solot.
Thank you so much for your time.
Appreciate that. I understand you will be submitting written comments, so we look forward to receiving those as well. If I could just use the chair's privilege to say thank you for sharing your story with us and I'm sorry for the difficulties you're facing, but clearly you have used that to try and further serve your community. I know that you were a very active member of the, excuse me, licensee and an active member of some very important communities beforehand, so it's just good to have you back in the room and we look forward to considering the issues you've raised. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And as you mentioned, we'll be submitting detailed public comment in writing and I'm always available and happy to answer additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no one further in person from the public, it appears not, we'll move over to folks who are joining us virtually. First, we have Mr. Benjamin Cohen, please. Mr. Cohen, once your microphone is activated, you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. And I note that there has been some evolution to the particular proposal on the cost-cutting measures by staff. When I was first writing you, the staff were presenting to the Committee of Bar Examiners a presentation that had an option with only one testing accommodation site, or so it was worded. I did not realize that they were excluding the State Bar's offices rather than choosing one of the State Bar's offices for that site and that it would actually be three of each. With that, my primary concern is that with remote becoming a standard condition again, there is the same intent that was used in 2020 and 2021 to give a pretty advantaged at-home testing situation to non-disabled applicants and not share that equally with disabled applicants. The staff seem to be preparing to require certain accommodations to be administered for the whole exam in person, even under this new climate, and the doing so is not necessary. It would be easy to have a body cam issued to applicants to provide a recording from their vantage point when they leave view of the screen or regarding materials they have with them to provide most accommodations remotely. It's just less inconvenient and more expensive for the staff. That is not a fundamental alteration or undue burden and it is not permissible under the ADA for this requirement to be a condition of testing accommodations unless the applicant actually prefers and affirmatively requests in person. The issue is squarely in my Ninth Circuit appeal and the State Bar risks the Ninth Circuit holding that policy unlawful after it has made all arrangements for the exam dependent on continuing that policy potentially in the weeks or days before the exam. Who knows when the decision is made? And by making this decision under uncertainty and making all its logistical commitments based on its views, it puts itself at significant legal jeopardy of the Ninth Circuit, forcing it to cancel an entire administration of the bar exam. It should instead voluntarily switch back to remote for those applicants who want it, but offer it to all disabled applicants who can be accommodated remotely at greater staff inconvenience and expense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Madam Secretary, will you please call who's next in the queue?
We have Todd Hill.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Hill. Once your microphone is activated, you'll have three minutes. Welcome back.
Good afternoon. Thank you for providing this opportunity for public comment. I come before you to discuss potential liabilities and causes of action for specific individuals related to this People's College of Law, PCL, as well as potential regulatory oversights by the State Bar itself. First, I previously brought evidence suggesting that the State Bar Act of 1927 gives regulatory authority to the State Bar and its Board of Trustees. This includes the adoption of the unaccredited law school rules, which govern the operation of institutions like PCL. However, under these rules, particularly the guidelines for unaccredited law schools registered were 1.6 and 2.2B, the State Bar seemingly failed to intervene in disputes between students and their law schools, while law schools have been required to engage in honesty with students in all financial dealings. Unfortunately, the PCL defendants reportedly violated these rules, intentionally representing facts and employing unfair business practices, including the withholding of transcripts for years. And when State Bar placed the institution under probation, its direct control as the sole regulatory authority in legal services and legal education offerings, the Bar has failed to compel the school and has failed to, in its otherwise other duty, to provide a transcript. Out of these rules, the State Bar seemingly has failed to intervene in disputes between students and their law schools, while law schools have been required to engage in honesty and have been told at the same time that the State Bar will not intervene in disputes, which basically is open season on students because any scheme that any law school comes up with, they already have it written in writing that the regulator won't do anything. A point example involves a student, also a board member, who attempted to restore compliance related to student unit reporting, but was consistently obstructed by defendants Gonzalez, Penyon, and Spiro. In addition, during the plaintiff's tenure at PCL from 2019 to 2021, PCL reportedly failed to make proper and timely mandatory disclosures to the plaintiff, violating Rule 2.3D and Rule 9.1. It is also alleged that PCL defendants engaged in inappropriate student recruitment and matriculation standards even after the plaintiff lodged formal demand for documents, with PCL defendants failing to produce the documents or respond to the request. Moreover, the State Bar has allegedly allowed PCL to operate in grossly negligent manner in its student recruitment and retention efforts, again, for years, again, during a period of time when it ostensibly was in control of the entity as the regulator. As a result, I allege, and really, it's just the truth, the State Bar's mishandling of PCL's non-compliance demonstrates unintentional avoidance of procedural law since at least 2017, despite known and actual non-compliance. The records are in the State Bar's hands and were in the State Bar's hands prior to my matriculation in the entity.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Your time has expired. Madam Secretary, who's next?
Next, we have Michael Sternberg.
Mr. Sternberg, good afternoon again and welcome back. You'll have three minutes once your mic is activated.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Board. I've made several public comments today about why I'm against the Inspector General proposal. I don't think Inspector Generals function. At the Finance Committee, trustee Soell promised to go back and look at my public comments. I would encourage the entire Board to go look at my YouTube channel, @FatherinExile, and look at the Las Vegas Police Playlist and the Nevada Attorney General Playlist where you will find undercover video that I have posted of how so-called independent investigators actually behave. You will see them obstruct, refuse to investigate, refuse to take evidence, refuse to follow their own policies, so please take a look at that. Again, take a look at that for what I'm about to say. You need cameras in every single courtroom in California. Now, I think that was recently passed. Not exactly sure the status of that, but I think the Bar needs to make it its official position that cameras must be in all courtrooms and furthermore, that citizens should be allowed to record in all publicly accessible areas in the court. Right now, in San Jose, where my family law case is, there's an order from a judge. I can't find any statute, but it's the order from the presiding judge, I believe, that is barring recording of public, excuse my typing, my screensaver came on, my recording of public areas. If recording were allowed, professional and judicial misconduct would be caught on a regular basis. I hope the Bar makes that position clear, that that is their position and that they would advocate for that. I do have future videos, undercover videos, that I'll be posting shortly. I am a military veteran. I'm 45 years old. I have five honorable discharges, including two from the California National Guard. For the first time ever, at 45 years old, I also have a criminal record. Why do I have a criminal record? Professional misconduct uninvestigated. Specifically, after my children were abducted from Las Vegas and I reported an attorney's involvement in that to the Bar and the Bar refused to investigate, that attorney continued with his misconduct unabated. In 2021, he filed numerous false and fraudulent motions and false sworn declarations with the court in San Jose, California. He then went to the El Dorado County District Attorney to get a warrant for my arrest. That district attorney did not disclose to the judge this whole history, my history with them. That district attorney was Brittany Ann Griffith, bar number 286919. Candor to the court, of course, is a rule of professional conduct. After getting her fraudulent warrant in September of 2021, she then sent me a letter telling me how to avoid getting a warrant. This was after I was arrested and after I was put into jail. The case number is S21CF0136 in El Dorado County. If I had more time, I would give you more details, but rest assured, I will be filing a complaint. I hope the Bar will take this information and send investigator to go get that court filed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sternberg. Madam Secretary?
Next, we have Taylor Swift, American singer.
Okay. Mr. or Ms. Swift, welcome. Once your microphone is activated, you will have three minutes to address us and if you sing, I will be very pleasantly surprised. Welcome. Good afternoon. Taylor Swift, are you still with us?
I do see that their mic has been activated.
Your microphone is activated. If you would unmute yourself, we are eager. We'll give it one more shot, Mr. or Ms. Swift. You may be having technical difficulties. We'll move on to the next member of the public who would like to address the Board of Trustees.
That's all. That's the, we don't have any additional members.
Okay.
I apologize. Stella Ny is also in attendance and would like to provide public comment.
Ms. Ny, welcome. We'll reset the clock for three minutes and once it's been activated at your mic, you'll have that amount of time.
Hi, thank you. I was really looking forward to that last commenter, too. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, trustees, staff, and Jenny leadership for your collaboration to ensure the ongoing integrity of Jenny. Thank you, State Bar leadership, for recommending the reinstatement of the Thursday night hotel stay for commissioners, which I hope the Board approves. I think that'll help with the morale issues that I've heard are affecting the commissioners, who, as you know, give 300 to 500 hours a year to work, Jenny work. I appreciate the seriousness with which you have taken comments about Jenny. I know that you seek to protect the public in your decision-making and I thank you for that and for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Ny, for your service and for sharing your thoughts with us today. Okay, I believe that is the last member of the public on public comment, which will take us to the minutes if I'm not mistaken. Trustees, you've got before you the June 12th and May 18th and 19th open session minutes. Does anyone have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, may have a motion to approve as presented.
Approve.
Second.
Motion by Noel, second by Stallings. Roll call, please.
Bratton, not present. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen, not present. Cisneros?
Aye.
Good, not present. Noel?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
I'm an aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Oops. Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. Minutes are adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. That'll move us on to item 30, which is my report. For those of you who were at the Executive Committee, you will have heard me introduce our newest member of the Board of Trustees, recently appointed by the Speaker of the Assembly, Anthony Rendon. Gennaro Trejo, Gennaro Trejo, as I like to say, is a Los Angeles native and manages the LA-based equity firm Pacific Well, which focuses on general partnership positions and deal capitalizations in the middle market. Previously, Gennaro served as a partner and head of structured finance at Zucchin Partners and Chief Operating Officer at Heart of Los Angeles, spearheading innovative projects and managing that organization's strategic partner relationships as an example with the LA Philharmonic and the UCLA's Geffen School of Medicine. Gennaro was a graduate fellow at the Stanford Graduate School of Business and holds degrees from the University of Chicago and UCLA. At the state level, he was appointed by also Speaker Rendon to the Community College Athlete Name, Image, and Likeness Working Group, with some very exciting things happening in that arena over the past several years, so thank you for your service on that. Mr. Trejo, would you like to introduce yourself to the Board and all our assembled guests?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair Duran. I appreciate the opportunity to serve. As has been stated, I'm originally from Los Angeles, have worked internationally doing private equity, but I've also had a very serious focus on helping my community in any way that I can. Over the years, professionally, I've been more of an investment banker, but over the last few years, I've been focusing more on deals and situations that are more impactful to the community in general. And so, is in part why I'm here. I just want to be helpful and I'm here to be available to anyone that might need the help. So, that said, I look forward to working with all of you and thank you for the nice presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And on behalf of the Board of Trustees, let me congratulate you on your appointment and wish you well. I'm glad that our mutual service on the Board will overlap by at least a couple of meetings or months. I look forward to working with you and the rest of the Board. Given the finance background that you've just described in your professional history and in your community service, at this time, I would like to inform the Board with their approval that I would like to appoint you to the Finance Committee. I'd also like to appoint you to the Executive Committee, as I mentioned earlier, at that meeting, along with trustee Tony, to the Executive Committee. And so, I understand that the secretary has prepared a resolution for us. Members can see it there on the screen. I'm happy to answer any questions. If there are none, can have a motion to approve that resolution.
Approve of the resolution.
Gentlemen, I've got a motion from trustee Noel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from trustee Cisneros. Thank you. May I have the roll?
Bratton, not present. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen, not present. Cisneros?
Aye.
Good, not present. Noel?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
I'm an aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Next on my report, I'd like to, for those of you who don't know, it's been a very active couple of months since our last Board of Trustees meeting here in Los Angeles. Really, the number of important convenings and events and meetings that we have had as individual members of the Board of Trustees, our leadership team and staff, so many of our employees, all to the very important end of public protection and advancing the interests and the mission of this agency from a financial perspective, from a governance perspective, and a policy perspective have been, I'm not going to lie, they've been a little bit tiring, but they have been exciting and I have enjoyed the work that has been going on. Specifically, members of the Board of Trustees will recognize the moniker SB40, which is Senator Umber's bill currently being considered in the legislature for the State Bar's annual licensing fee, among other important legislative changes affecting our agency. Many members of the Board of Trustees, along with our leadership staff, and many of our line-level employees, members of the SEIU International, have taken time to meet with, converse with, in some ways, I hope, educate and listen to many of our legislative stakeholders. In particular, the judiciary committees at both the Assembly and the Senate and their very hard-working staff have been very generous with their time in meeting with us in small groups to talk about SB40, to talk about the agency's advance, advancing our reform mission and other important issues. I would like to offer my own personal, very sincere and heartfelt thanks to all of those people whom I've just mentioned, many who went unnamed, but certainly folks know who you are for continuing to work after hours, as it were. I mean, it's one thing to show up for two days of board meetings and intervening committee meetings as they are, but these, you know, whether they're 20 minutes or half an hour or sometimes half a day or a day, the dedication of those periods of time to advance the mission of this agency, I hope are having an impact. I certainly appreciate the folks on the other side of the table who have taken the time to meet with us and converse with us as we seek to keep the Bar moving forward in our reform efforts and in protecting the public. To that end, another important and enjoyable meeting that Vice Chair Stallings and I had along with Ms. Wilson, Mr. Cardona, and Ms. Dovtian, our leadership staff, was with Chief Justice Patricia Guerrero recently at her office in San Francisco, along with her leadership team, discussing, of course, many of the issues that I just mentioned, the advancement of the agency's mission. Chief Justice Guerrero is an exemplary leader with a very thoughtful mind, a very concise way of communicating, clearly has put a lot of thought into the role that she has recently stepped into in the state. We look forward to working with her and her staff as an arm of the Supreme Court in advancing the public protection mission of this agency. Thank you all for that. I think that is all I have in my report. I've talked long enough. We will move on to item 41, the executive director report.
All right. I'll just briefly pick up on where you left off. I want to express a lot of appreciation to each member of this Board of Trustees. Without exception, each one of you was involved and instrumental in the work that Chair Duran talked about. You leveraged your relationships, your strategic advice, your time to help get to where we are today. And what I would say about where we are today, in my view, having been here at the Bar on and off for eight years, we are better positioned with our stakeholders than we have ever been. And that doesn't mean that everything is solved and we don't continue to have tremendous work to do to rebuild trust. work to do to rebuild trust, but the nature of the relationships that we have, particularly in Sacramento, the level of transparency and dialogue, two-way communication that we now have, is really unprecedented in my time. And I really want to thank you all for that, and I, and I mean that very sincerely. Each one of you has been involved, so thank you so much. And I also want to state my appreciation for our staff. We've had a core group of staff that has been working with us in these last few months, or it feels like months, maybe it's been last many weeks, on our legislative push in Sacramento, and that's staff at this level and that you all are familiar with, but really the staff I'm talking about now, our, our line staff who work, are working in the trenches, most particularly in the Office of the Chief Child Counsel, talking about their work and the impact of our financial issues in particular, on their ability to do their work, also talking about the integrity that they bring to the work. And there is nothing that can replace that voice at the table with our legislative stakeholders. So I want to express my appreciation for them as well in this public forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. We'll move on to item 50, which is the Consent Calendar. I have advanced notice that Trustee Tony has asked that items 50-3 and 50-4 be removed from the consent for either questions or individual discussion. Is that still the case?
Just 50-4. I'm fine with leaving 50-3.
Okay. So if I could have a motion on the remainder of the Consent Calendar minus 50-4, we will... 50-5, staff is telling me we will pull that as well? Okay, so the Consent Calendar is everything except for four and five. May have that motion.
I'll move the Consent Calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Soell, trust, excuse me, second by Buena Ventura, may have a roll.
Bratton, not present. Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Chen, not present. Sisneros.
Aye.
Good, not present. Noel.
Aye.
Shelby.
Aye.
Soell.
Aye.
Stallings.
Aye, but I would have the record reflect my recusal from 50-2, the COPRAC agenda item.
Aye.
Trejo.
I'm going to recuse myself from item 50-3, but otherwise vote aye.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
I believe, I believe you have to recuse yourself from 50-3.
Yes. I'm sorry. I vote aye, except I recuse myself 60-3.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Trejo.
I'm sorry.
You registered the same vote, aye, except for recuse of 150-3.
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Duran.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Item 50-4 is the approval of our 2022 Quarter 4 Financial Statements and Investment Report and the 2023 Quarter 1 Investment Report. Mr. Tony, would you like a staff presentation, or do you just have a question or a comment?
I think it's important for the full board to, at the very high level, review the financial reports. I think that's kind of fiduciary responsibility of the entire board, particularly given our kind of financial crisis that we're in. So I'd appreciate just a, you know, not a detail, but a, what are the main numbers here? Pluses, minuses, revenue, expenses, where we're at.
Okay, great, thank you for that. Board members, we're going to hear a quick presentation from Arisalee Montoya Chico to supplement your review of the agenda item in advance of today's meeting. Welcome back.
Yes, thank you, Ruben. I'm going to present just a couple slides, so let me know, please, when you see it, just because it's easier to see numbers. So if you could, please let me know once you see my screen.
Yes.
Okay, so this presentation, you know, I was, I was going to do it back in, when it was in May, but we ran out of time, so I'm presenting in here the results for our quarter, Q4 2022, which is really the full results of our 2022 fiscal year, and in a later presentation, I'll cover Q1 results. So I'll go really quick through some of these revenue, and then my following slide is on expenses. So here's the results of our full year's operating revenues. As you can see, we ended our revenues higher than budgeted by about almost $44 million. Most of that, as you can see, is accounted by the Legal Services Trust Fund, which is one of the grant-related funds, and all the grant-related funds, which is equal access fund grants funds, and Legal Services Trust Fund are all passed through. So we get money and then we disperse it, we pass it through to subrecipients. For the general fund, just because of our situation, we did, and a positive note, we did end $2 million, about $2 million higher than what we budgeted. That was really mostly mandatory fees and law corp fees that we received more than we had anticipated. As I mentioned, Legal Services Trust Fund has consistently, due to the IULTA revenues that, that are included as part of that trust, of that fund, have been increasingly, the accounts are getting larger and as well as the interest rates are, have been much higher than what we've budgeted. So the combination of higher, larger account balances and interest rates increasing have really caused the IULTA revenues to increase significantly. You'll see a similar result in Q1. The Admissions Fund also ended higher than budgeted by about $2 million as well, and that's really just the February and July exam fees being higher as more applicants sat for those. On the expenses, our operating expenses, as you can see here, were about $6.5 million higher than we budgeted, and this is the breakout of the funds that kind of make up that variance. I'll first cover Admissions Fund. I just want to highlight a couple funds. Admissions Fund, in particular, as you can see, it was pretty much on target, on budget, but I do want to highlight the Admissions Fund is still in deficit position as of the end of 2022. However, the deficit position was smaller than what we had originally budgeted for 2022. So our budget was close to $9 million, and the actual deficit position was 6.7. The Client Security Fund, again, lower by budget and their spending by about $5 million, and really, that's just due to the, the claims in their case inventory that were just deemed ineligible for payment. So now, moving back to the general fund, as you can see here, it, it shows that we were over budgeted by $11.8 million, almost $12 million. That's really a result of unbudgeted vacation and sick accruals and depreciation adjustments that we have to make. At the end of the year, we have to prepare our books for our auditors, and what that means is we have to do several accounting adjustments. It's not actual cash outflows or cash inflows per se, but we do have to convert our books to US GAAP basis and essentially proper accounting, so we do have to add several accruals, and that's what kind of causes, in this slide, our expenses to be higher than budget. I do have this slide, though, to kind of back out those year-end adjustments we did that are kind of purely accounting for accounting purposes. So with the, with those adjustments backed out, our actual expenses ended up being $94 million, compared to about $92 million that we budgeted. So we did overspend by $4.8 million, but I just wanted to highlight that the expenses were lower than what, than what the actual showed if you were to look at our audited financial statements. And those are, sorry, that's my presentation of the financial statements themselves. On the investment reports, they're in the agenda item, but the only thing I'll highlight is our interest rates have been improving, so obviously, we're getting more interest on those. Our, our investments that we make are, we follow the California policy, so they're pretty safe, low-risk securities, and from Q1, Q4 to Q1, the increase in, in the investments is really just that we purchased. We purchased additional investments, but the interest rates have continued to increase compared to what we were seeing in the past year, year and a half. So if, if anybody has any questions, I can answer. Be happy to do so.
I have, I have a quick question. This is Trustee Trejo.
Yes, please.
Before adjustments, I noticed that if I'm, if I'm following your, your model correctly, you show an operating budget surplus of about, if I, if I just take the operating expenses from the operating revenue, just the, that, just that top line, before we allot for all the funds, which from what I understand are primarily pass-through entities or pass-through funds, right?
Yeah, bar, bar-wide, you're right, bar-wide, operating revenues were $295, and operating expenses bar-wide were $290. So bar-wide, we were in a surplus position.
Right, which, which is, which is where I have to understand where the, where the catastrophe comes in from an operational standpoint, right?
So, sorry, were you going to...
That was just me.
Yeah, so, but, but, right, like I mentioned, bar-wide, yes, we did in, in a surplus position. Most of that surplus really is accounted for in the grant-related funds. The grant-related funds make up a significant portion of, of our total revenues. The general fund, which is, what I like to focus is the general fund and the admissions fund, since those are the ones that are funded by, well, the general fund by mandatory fees, admissions just because it has an ongoing structural deficit.
Sure, I just, it's, I understood it a little differently, that's all.
Okay. Did I answer, did I answer your question, though?
Thank you.
Okay.
Trustee Soell, please.
Arisalee, just a really quick question, just on, on the pass-through.
Mm-hmm.
You know, obviously, the bar is acting as almost like the fiscal agent as that money passes through. Do, do we get some sort of an admin fee related to that, and could you just remind me what that is, please?
Yes, for all of the grant-related funds, we do get a portion that's essentially reimbursed to us, and we record it in, in revenue in each of the respective grants. There's, I know EAFs and I believe homeless prevention, all the, we, we have, I think, homeless prevention 2, 3, and 4 now, they always stipulate a certain amount, whether it's, and I don't, and I don't have the top of my head exactly what that is, but usually it's 10% or a certain dollar amount, but yeah, we do get a, a portion that we can get reimbursed for, for administering those grants.
Thank you, Ms. Montoya Chico. Any other questions? Mr. Tony.
This is a question where I'm trying to tie what's in the next item, which is the Independent Auditor's Report, with what's in, in this. So when I, on, on page 12 of the Independent Auditor's Report, it says that the general fund operating reserves at the end of the year were $14.1 million. And I was surprised it was that high, because I thought we had talked about it being lower, but, you know, in terms of what we're looking at here, maybe you could show us what our operating reserves are, whether this is, you know, like, which is correct, or maybe they're both $14 million, and I just couldn't read it properly in this end year 2002, or maybe there's, you know, maybe it's apples and oranges, maybe, but I, I'm just trying to tie two numbers together.
Okay, Mark, what page? I'm pulling up the financial statements that I have. What page were you on, so I can try to follow?
In the Independent Auditor's Report.
Mm-hmm.
Page 12 starts with a sentence saying, "The 2022 general fund budget projects $91.1 million in revenue." I'm not going to read the whole, because it's the sentence after that that says, "General fund expenses exceeded revenues by approximately $3.9 million, bringing operating reserves to $14.1 million." Do you not see that? Am I in the wrong place? That's what I wrote down in my notes. I can look again at the...
Arisalee, I think Trustee Tony is talking about the item posted under 101, the audit.
Okay, hold on, let me see.
Mark, are you remembering like I'm remembering, that we, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of about 8, 8 million?
Yeah, that's...
Our, our reserves, at the end of 2023, we, yes, we budgeted the general, we projected the general fund reserves at the end of '23 to be about 8 million, and that's what was adopted in the budget. That report only has two pages, but, okay, Mark, I, I have the financial statements open, and I am on page 12, but I don't see, I don't see the numbers you're talking about.
Okay, let me, let me look further. Keep going.
Yeah, and let me know, I can, I can look, I can look through with you and answer your question, where, where, where you're seeing your numbers.
Mr. Chair, while they are looking for the number, this would be a great opportunity to segue into this agenda item.
Into 101?
Yes.
So we're going to require a vote on 50-3 first, dash, dash 4 first, I'm sorry.
We can do that.
Okay, so let's go ahead and...
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Trustee Tony, I didn't hear the second, was it? Trustee Shelby, on 50-4, as presented, can we have the vote, please?
Bratton, not present. Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Chen, not present. Sisneros.
Aye.
Good, not present. Noel.
Aye.
Shelby.
Aye.
Soell.
Aye.
Stallings.
Stallings had to step out.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo.
Aye.
Duran.
Aye.
We have eight ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Next on the agenda is an Audit Committee Report by the Chair of that Committee, Trustee Shelby, regarding the annual financial statement audit, including the Legal Services Trust Fund Report.
Yes, as you all know, typically, I think statutorily, that it has to be submitted to the legislature on the 30th of April, and in our last meeting, we did not get the opportunity to talk about the audited financials, and so wanted to spend a little time doing that with you today. Highlights from the financial statements audit, really want to, we first started working with MGO, who we know is in our last year of their contract. They met with the Audit Committee to first discuss the plan for the financial statements in November of 2022. I met with the auditors in April of 2023 to discuss the audit and respond to several questions, and then they presented the draft financial statements to the Audit Committee later on that month, I believe it was April the 28th, that Friday. I would like to publicly thank David Bullock, Jeanne, Jeanne Chim, and Karina Lu, Jeanne, please forgive me, and Karina Lu from MGO, for their work with the financial statements. I would also like to thank the State Bar staff that made these possible, of course, our CFO, Arisalee Montoya Chico, Coco Zhang, Yasmin Alili, and of course, Justin Ewer. And so the financial statements were submitted to the Supreme Court and the legislature, as I stated, by the statutory mandate of April the 30th. The reports include the financial statements for the State Bar, the statement of expenditures of mandatory membership fees, and the Legal Services Trust Fund Report. All three reports received an unmodified opinion, which means the auditor concluded that the reports were presented fairly, in all material respects, in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the USA. And so I know Mr. Tony, I'm, maybe you have found your question, and I'm going to ask our CFO if you have anything that you would like to add to that, just kind of brief overview.
On the financial, audited financial statements?
Yes, ma'am.
No, I think, you know, I also want to thank my team. We've, you know, since I started a little bit over two years ago, I think we've, there was a lot of challenges in the Office of Finance, and we did have previously certain control deficiencies in our controls, primarily relating to our financial reporting, and we've had Oracle, Oracle, which is our ERP system, issues, but, you know, we've seen, we've since turned it around, and we've corrected those deficiencies that we had in prior years. So I'm glad to see that we're getting unmodified opinions, basically clean, clean opinions on our financial statements. It's been, you know, we have a good working relationship with our auditors, and I just have to thank my team for, for helping me turn the office around and making sure that we're correcting those, those deficiencies that we, that existed when I first started. correcting those deficiencies that we, that existed when I first started.
Thank you. I did find, it is page 12 of the, this is the independent auditor's report, and the subheading is called Economic Factors Facing the State Bar. And unfortunately, my part that I'm asking about is buried in the second paragraph under that, so do you see where it says economic factors?
Yeah, I think, I think I found it, Mark, where it says, "The 2022 general fund budget projects," and I think that's, that is talking about our 2022 projections, whereas the amount that you guys have in your mind, the eight million, that is our projected general fund ending reserve balance in our 2023 budget. So, I don't know if that's the number you guys, I heard eight million, and eight million is what we initially adopted as the ending 2023 general fund reserve.
Okay, so, in other words, it was 14 million at the end, but we did agree to spend 6 million of it, because, you know, we approved a budget that had a deficit. So, yeah, I just wanted to confirm, okay, so that the eight million is the projected, which we may have to modify later for other reasons, building-related, as I know. Okay, so that's good. You answered my question, thank you very much. I was just trying to make sure that I got the numbers right.
Thank you, trustee Tony, trustee Shelby, Ms. Montoya Chico. If there are no further questions on item 100, may have a motion. Does it require a motion, or it was just a report?
Just a report, yeah.
Okay. Is it receiving file?
Yes, there's a resolution to receive it.
We have received the report. Can I have a resolution on that motion, please?
Can I just ask a point of clarification, in terms of receiving a report that has already been submitted to the legislature? Is it just procedural?
My understanding, I think staff thought that you, as the audit committee chair, wanted to have a resolution, and then looking at prior, recent prior actions of this type, there was a resolution acknowledging receipt. I did question whether this was needed, so I don't personally believe it's needed, per se, but I think there was a thought that it was desired. As we know, going forward, there's a fix, because the statutory deadline has moved back, so it's the will of the board here.
No, and just clarification, as the audit chair, there was no desire for a resolution. There was a desire to have it on the May agenda to discuss it, because the audit committee had adopted it, and we submitted it to the legislature, so thank you.
All of that makes sense to me, so without objection, we'll move on in the agenda. Thank you very much. And, Mr. Tony, thank you for raising the item, so that members of the public and others who are watching could sort of get that bird's eye view of the budget issues as well. I see that trustee Chen has joined us, so I just wanted to take a second to say welcome. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
We move on to the, the board sitting as the regulation and discipline committee, which is section 60 of our agenda. Item 60-1 is the report on the implementation of random audit recommendations. Mr. Cardona, welcome.
Thank you. So, this is one of our, this is one of our periodic updates on progress in complying with the recommendations from the biannual, or, sorry, semi-annual random audits. We have two audit reports that we're reporting on, one which was issued for a review of closed cases during the period September 1st, 2020, through February 28th, 2021, and the second of which was for the six-month period following that, from March 1st, 2021, through August 31st, 2021. We reported on our compliance with most of the recommendations from the random audit reports in May, but noted that we would report on additional training that had not yet been provided, but was going to be provided at this meeting. The agenda item contains a full report on that, there are just two things I want to kind of highlight. One, one of the issues that has repeatedly come up in the random audits, and also in our own experiences and staff reports, is issues relating to communications with complainants and respondents. From the complainant and respondent side, a feeling that we are not communicating sufficiently the reasons for why we take certain actions, and particularly closing cases. And on the staff side, complaints about issues with respondents and complainants, who often make, pose difficult issues, including complainants and respondents, who pose threats of various kinds, or make verbal threats to people in connection with the handling of the cases. So, we've provided training on that in two ways. One, we provided a kind of specialized training for a selected group of approximately 35 investigators and attorneys on best practices for dealing with individuals who pose difficult issues. We will soon be spreading that training out, using those people who engaged in that training to the rest of the office. In addition, we provided general training to all of our attorneys and investigators on communications with complainants and respondents, how best to do that, how to ensure that it conveys what we are doing and why, and we conducted that training in May. We'll continue to follow up in this area, because it continues to be an area of concern from both sides. The second was, the second thing I wanted to highlight was, one of the recommendations from the random audit was that we work with the special disciplinary trial counsel to provide training on maintenance and reporting in Odyssey, and we have now done that, as the special disciplinary trial counsel moved to using Odyssey more, so that we have better records of those cases, and we can eliminate transitions of manual files back and forth. That training as well was provided in May of 2023. We'll continue to work with the special disciplinary trial counsel if she believes additional training is necessary as we move forward, and we'll try and make arrangements for that as well. With that, everything else is in the agenda item, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cardona. Any questions on this agenda item? Mr. Chair Stallings, please.
All right, thank you, George, for your work on this. I just was looking at page four, and this relates to the reopening of only 12 files out of the 255 audited files, and the language suggests that OCTC staff are overall appropriately resolving cases. And I just want to kind of double-click on one thing in this. When a file is pulled out for potential reopening, is there any sort of subsequent training that's recommended to those staff members? Is there any office-wide training that's suggested? How are we handling that with the employees?
Yes, so, often, the reasons for why the cases are reopened or recommended for reopening, we look at the number that are recommended for reopening, as opposed to those we actually reopen. So, they're recommended for reopening, we will then potentially take a second look at the issues that are identified, and we may or may not reopen all of those. But, to the extent that there are issues identified in those, there are frequently recommendations from the auditor in connection with that, for either individualized staff training, going back to the individual staff member, if it appears to be more of an individual problem, or doing general office training, if it appears to be a more generalized problem. And those are the types of trainings that we follow up on in our report.
Thank you. I do have one question with respect to the special deputy trial counsel program and their access to Odyssey now, which I think is a good, a good development. I'm just going to assume that the technology has a way of walling off, for lack of a better word, them from the rest of our Odyssey files. Just want to confirm that for anybody who might be concerned.
I believe that is the case, that they can access their files, but not all of them.
Wonderful, thank you. Mr. Cardona is up next with discussion regarding performance metrics, your regular report on this, thank you. If we could get the presentation up on the screen, it is, it is coming, there it is.
Mr. Chair, well, that's coming up, George, if I could just ask you just one question on the, on the previous item, and that is, the trainings that you're talking about, are these now going to become sort of regularized, and these aren't just sort of one-offs, correct?
No, I mean, we do continual kind of training as we identify issues that require training, and that can come from any one of a number of sources. Some suggestions come from the random audit, others come just from as we work through cases and identify issues ourselves on which we think training is necessary, so it's kind of an ongoing thing. The particular topics of the training will vary, as we see different types of problems arising and identify different types of training, but the training is an ongoing function within OCTC. Okay. All right, moving to the next item, which is our quarterly report on our performance metrics. There are a couple of things we're going to discuss today, assuming I can get this to Technology. Clearly, I do not have the right thumb, okay.
Try the left one.
So, as everybody will recall, we do, we get performance metrics that are updated twice a year, every quarter, we report on those, there's an interactive dashboard that's available for viewing. We last reported on quarter one at the May meeting, we're now reporting on the quarter two statistics for this quarter. There have been some modifications to the dashboard to modify and add some metrics, and in particular, to add specific targets for many of the metrics, which was something that we'd been working on over the last quarter. So, the, this is the, sorry, so this is the first page with our key performance indicators, so I'll touch on several of these. Number of them are not good. So, for example, the case inventory, you can see that our case inventory has been going up, it has now increased to 6,600 some cases. Our caseload clearance rate is down, our minimal target there is 100%, which would basically keep us at break even. Ideally, we would want a rate that is in excess of that, and one thing I've talked about with the disciplinary liaisons is changing that, so that the target is more something like 120%, so that we at least have something to work towards, in an effort to bring down the inventory. The two quality measures that you see on the right, reopenings by the complaint review unit, and random audit reopenings are, I'm not concerned about either of those, 1% and the 4.7% is sufficiently close to our target of 4.3%. That tends to fluctuate around that 4.3% going up some quarters, going down others, so I'm not that concerned about either of those. The other one that is of concern is the average days spent in investigation. As you can see, for non-complex cases, we're at 198 days in investigation, for complex cases at 262. Both of those reflect increases from the last quarter, and as you'll see from the targets below, which I'll explain in a second, they're well above those targets, although I will note, as you'll see when I explain how we derive those targets, those targets are fairly aggressive targets that are based on our SB 211 case processing standards, so I'll explain that in a second. The average days to close, as you can see, we've also had an increase in that for our non-complex cases from the last quarter, but we have brought down the time, average days to close for our complex cases, and I'll explain the targets that we've set there as well. On the right, again, of concern, the percent of cases closed within the target, right now, this is using our current statutory targets of 180 days for non-complex cases and 365 days for complex cases. Our targets there are, we closed 90% of our cases within those statutory timeframes, and as you can see, while we're fairly close for the non-complex cases, we are very far off for the complex cases. And so, I'll talk about some of those, and what we're doing about that in a second. So, in terms of the targets, which are new. This is clearly just not working. Okay, my apologies, but I'm hopeless. So, this, this shows you how we derive the targets for the average days spent in investigation, the table at the top. So, this is not the right one, can we go back? One more, there we go, nope. Yep, next one. There should be one between those, go back. There, nope, go back one more. Okay, there's a slide missing, so. In any event, the target, the 120 days and 180 day targets for the average days spent in investigation, what we did was, we took our SB 211 case processing standards, which had targets of 150 days in investigation for non-complex cases that were lower risk, which was the longer timeframe, and 210 days for complex cases, which was, again, the longer timeframe, subtracted out the 30-day target for cases in intake, to arrive at the 120 and 180-day targets for time in investigation for complex and non-complex cases, respectively. Let's see if the next slide works. So, if we could go to the next slide. In terms of the average days to close, we set our targets there, based on the statutory targets, the statute is there, six months for non-complex cases, 180 days, 365 days, 12 months for complex cases, and next slide. This is our next metric, which is our backlog, shown in two ways. On the left is the projected cases closed in backlog status in 2023, this is a projection for 2023 of the total number of cases that will be closed outside our statutory timeframes, again, 180 days for non-complex cases, 365 days for complex cases. Our target here is, again, 10%. In other words, we would have 90% of our cases closed within the backlog timeframe. As you can see, we're at 15%, the projection right now, which is above that. More concerning is the metric on the right, which is the number of cases currently open, which are already in backlog. In other words, cases that we have not closed, but are still working on, that are already exceeding those targets of 180 days for non-complex cases and 365 days for complex cases. As you can see here, we've got a large number of cases, 3,027, and we're currently at 45% of equal concern. If you look on the right in the trend line at the bottom on the graph, you will see a gradual trend up, all the way from the left, all the way across. We've gradually been going up in that metric ever since 2019. This is of concern, because obviously, as the number of open cases that are in backlog increases, it's also going to drive an increase in the number of cases closing in backlog. So, to address this, and I'll be discussing this at a later presentation, to address this, we've undergone, as of July 1st, a significant reorganization in OCTC's structure, in an effort to more efficiently and effectively handle our cases. In essence, we've shifted from our previous organization, which had 12 trial and investigation teams, that basically handled all cases of all types. We've instead differentiated our teams, so that we now have differentiated trial teams that will be handling different types of cases. It's an effort to speed the handling of those cases that are most likely, with a little bit of investigation, to be able to be identified as ones that should close, or reverse identified as ones that we would move to teams that would spend more time investigating them, so that we can drive quicker resolutions of those cases to which we shouldn't be dedicating resources, and then have teams that will handle the more serious cases, and cases in certain specialized areas, to which we can dedicate the resources that we need to handle those investigations. That reorg was effective July 1st. We're going to have probably a 60 to 90-day transition time, in which the teams work down the cases they were previously handling, and get to the point where they'll be handling those cases. And then, over Q4 of this year and Q1 of next year, we will hopefully look to see some improvement in these metrics. In particular, we'll be looking to see if we can drive the trend line on the percent of open cases in backlog status, and the trend line on our inventory numbers down. I don't think we will hit our targets, but I hope to turn it around and start to see them move more downwards, towards our targets, as opposed to continuing to go up. So, that's kind of a preview of what's coming. I will note that as we drive, hopefully drive, the number of open cases in backlog status down, that will likely drive the number of cases closed in backlog status up. down, that will likely drive the number of cases closed in backlog status up as we will be closing those cases. So those are the trends that we're going to be looking for as we move forward in time with the new reorganization. And again, more specifics of that I'll discuss in another item for the board. Turning to our next slide, this is one of the causes of our increasing inventory. As you can see at the top, it's the case clearance rate and the number of cases closed as opposed to the incoming cases on the bottom. The inventory is on the right. As you can see here, we've seen over the last three quarters, an increase in the number of incoming cases. That's what I believe is primarily driving our decrease in case clearance rate. That's something we need to work on, and basically, that's part of what the reorganization is intended to accomplish, to allow us to keep at or near above a 100% case clearance rate even as the number of cases that we get increases. On the top right, you can see case age at closure. Over time, the trend line is essentially with some spikes. It's essentially flat or slightly down, which is good. On the bottom, you can see our inventory, and if you look at the inventory as opposed to the incoming case trends, you can see that our inventory has been going up in part in response to increasing numbers of cases coming in. If we can go to the next slide. This metric is basically the number of cases passing through each of our three phases, intake, investigation, and charging, and then the duration of the cases at each phase. Again, here, we've set new targets, targets for the time that cases should be spending in intake, investigation, and charging, and the next few slides explain those. The closed-in intake, the 30 days is taken from our SB 211 case processing standards. The 150 days is taken as a weighted average of the 120 and 180-day targets for non-complex and complex cases that I discussed previously, weighting those at 50% for those types of cases, which, based on discussions with MAD, is roughly where we are. And then the final target, the 185 days, is taken by subtracting out the 30 days and 150 days for time in intake and investigation. If we can go to the next slide. And one more. Basically, taken by subtracting the 30 days and 150 days, which is a total of 180 days in intake and investigation from the 365 days for complex cases, given that the vast majority of cases that move to charging are, in fact, complex cases. So those are the targets there, and we will shoot for trying to move closer to those, particularly in charging, where we have a large number of cases that are older. As part of the reorganization, we've created a new team of people who are going to be focused on working the older cases and trying to identify those that can be worked and eliminated, closed, and/or actually charged, to try and focus on some of our older cases to drive down the average times in these areas. If we can go to the next slide. This is a new metric that shows the number of disciplinary filings and the number of attorneys to whom those disciplinary filings apply. We don't have targets here because when we file and what we file is going to be highly fact-specific and dependent on what investigations turn up. But these will give you the trends of both the numbers of filings and the numbers of attorneys over time. If we can go to the next slide. This is the other metric that we reported on for the first time last quarter, which is looking at the number of respondents who, in two ways, are 15-plus and 40-plus. That is, people who have 15-plus or 40-plus complaints against them within the last five years. At the top, we're looking at the number of respondents who had a new case opened against them in quarter two of 2023. So anybody who, during the time period within quarter two, had a case opened against them, how many of those people had 15 or 40 complaints against them over the last five years? And at the bottom, a different way of looking at this, for anybody who had a case open at any time in Q2 2023, even if that case was opened earlier, if it remained open in Q2 2023, how many of those had either 15 or 40 complaints against them over the prior five years? What you'll see is generally, we're seeing a 5% of our respondents have 15 or more complaints and 1% have 40 or more complaints. That was consistent with last quarter, and what we're going to do is look at this over time to see if that remains a common percentage. Turning to the next slide, these are the quality measures I already discussed, so I'm not going to discuss them again. If we can go to the next slide. Whoops. If we can go back. And they're missing. Okay. So I will end there.
Thank you for the report, Mr. Cardona. I see several hands going up, so I hope you're comfortable. Trustee, what do I do it up, please?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair Grant. Thank you, Mr. Cardona, for your report. I wanted to ask you some questions on the, the issue of your, your data on the, the number of days of investigation. I just wanted to understand, does, when you talk about the number of days of investigation, does that mean every day there is something that's being done to actually investigate a matter, or is it just by virtue of the case still being open that that counts as a day of investigation?
It's the latter. It's the time that, from the time case moves from intake to investigation, it's looking at the total time from that event up to the time that the case is either closed or transferred to charging.
Okay. And then, when you talked about the, some of the reforms you're, you've going to be instituting, which requires you're going to have new teams, how is the new team different from the old team?
So as I mentioned, right now, we have 12 teams, 12 trial and investigation teams. Three of those, two of those are specialized. One handles immigration cases, one handles unauthorized practice of law cases. Those two teams are remaining the same, the special, those two specialized teams. In addition, the next agenda item is going to discuss, we have a pilot team that handles client trust account and bank reportable action cases. As we'll see in the next agenda item, based on the data from that pilot team, we're going to be making that permanent. So we'll be, have three specialized teams, one for client trust account-related matters and bank reportable actions, one for immigration cases, one for unauthorized practice of law. Right now, all of the other trial teams are undifferentiated. They all handle cases vertically from start to finish. So this, a case comes in, it's assigned to an investigator and an attorney who are responsible for that from start to finish. That's different from how most prosecuting offices handle cases. Most prosecuting offices have some subset of cases that they handle vertically, having the same staff assigned to that case from start to the finish, and then handle a much larger proportion of their cases horizontally, having a group of investigators and attorneys who are assigned to investigate those cases, weed out those that should move forward to trial, and then transfer those trial cases to a group of trial attorneys. We're moving to that model. We're going to have horizontal teams for investigation that will be focused on investigation. One purpose there is to avoid the delays that have occurred in our vertical teams, where an attorney who's assigned to a case has to handle a trial, and there, that case sits in investigation because that attorney is busy handling their trial. So that's, that's the primary change in terms of the organization of the teams.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Stallings, do you hang up?
George, I know one of the proposals in SB 40 is to get rid of private approvals. Could you just talk briefly about what impact, if any, that will have on your, on the numbers that we're seeing here today?
I don't think it will have that much of an impact. We don't do that many private approvals. So I, I just, I don't think that will have any significant impact on our overall statistics.
Any other questions? Trustee Sewell.
George, concerned about the, just the spike in the number of cases. And is that, you, you have any theories as to why that, why that is?
I think we're actually returning to pre-pandemic. So in the latter half of 2020, 2021, and the first part of 2022, are, are the number of cases coming in was generally down. There were spikes therein, but they were generally down from what we saw pre-pandemic, at least pre-pandemic in the period after the online complaint portal was opened. We saw a spike in complaints when the online complaint portal was opened, and then we hit kind of a norm pre-pandemic. I think we're now returning to that pre-pandemic norm. So I think the number of cases that are coming in now is probably more reflective of what we can expect over going forward. But obviously, we'll track that and see if that turns out to be the case.
And if that is the case, how will we position vis-à-vis our staffing ratios relative to that?
So, you know, we've, we have recently added some people to our intake group to try and handle more of those cases and, and speed the intake process to try and get to our 30 days in intake, to turn around cases in intake. And then I'm hoping that these shifts in the team structure will enable us to handle many of those cases more efficiently and hopefully increase our case clearance rate and drive down our inventory. But again, we'll need to see how that works out over time. As you recall, from SB 211, one of the things that we had planned to do in the future was a staffing needs analysis. And once we have this new structure in place and have some data, I think that'll provide a basis for doing that staffing needs analysis that is part of what we have to do in connection with the SB 211 case processing standards. And I think that'll give us a much better idea once we've got this new structure in place. Hopefully, it does increase the efficiency of handling cases, and then will be a basis for doing that staffing analysis.
Thank you, Trustee Sewell. Trustee Trejo.
Thank you so much for your work. One of the things I'd like to say is that, you know, whenever you're dealing with estimates or pro forma, they're by definition incorrect, right? And I think that prior to the reorganization, just as, just to take one case, for instance, the average date of, you have the average day spent in investigation. Knowing what you know now and after this reorganization you just went through, is your target date any different now as a result of that? Is that, and that, I'm just saying this as an example because it was clearly off prior, right, by, by 30%. As you're moving forward, is your target now different, or does it still remain that 198?
So the 198 is not the target. That's our actual. The target is below that, which is 120 days, and that will remain our target for now.
Yeah, so that can, the, the, I guess the question stands.
Yes. So yes, that, that is the target we're shooting for. We tried to set more aggressive targets based on the SB 211 case processing standards, which were recognized as being an aggressive goal to move towards. So we've kept those as our targets. What I'd like to see over the next two to three quarters is a shift towards that target from the current 198. So a trend line that shows that we're moving in the right direction.
I guess without going into specifics, do you feel that the, the reorganization, the reorganization, the changes that you made would be sufficient to at least see it some, a closer number? Were the variances in as high perhaps, or what do you?
That, that, that's, that's my hope, that we will see a lesser variance between the actual time and the target.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Trejo. Any other questions for Mr. Cardona? Before we move on, I just want to say thank you to Trustee Cardona for the, as always, comprehensive report, notwithstanding these are tough numbers to look at. I also do want to thank Trustees Sisnetos and Tony, the discipline liaisons, for the role that they play in working with Mr. Cardona in overseeing the Chief Trial Counsel's office. The, the fact that you are willing to, to make changes that you've discussed here and, and pivot in efforts to seize, you know, to see some positive effect, I think, is a, a good sign, and certainly look forward to seeing. It's only July 20th, right? So we're 20 days into your new team structure. But certainly, I suspect in September, we'll have a little bit better view, and then certainly after that as well.
Yeah. I mean, in fairness, I think in September, we'll see what we see, but as I said, there is going to be a transition period where people are still working down their old cases before we kind of, so I would hope to see the impact of the reorganization in the quarter from September to December more than in the quarter from July to September.
And to, to the extent that it, you know, it means anything, I, I hope that you will convey to your staff at least my thanks as the chair for sort of rolling with these changes and being willing to adapt and, and adjust in an effort to improve all these numbers.
I will convey that. I think they will appreciate that.
Thank you. Trustee Shelby.
And I just have a question. As always, George, you always come extremely prepared and, and ready to respond to questions. And I really appreciated the, my questions were answered, and I stepped out of the room in terms of the timeframe as it related to being able to assess, you know, whether or not the, the, I shouldn't say the success, but assess the reorganization to be able to make some observations. But I think you talked to that. But in relation to the legislature, because they play such an important role in who we are and what we do, how has this or will this reorganization be communicated? How will they be educated around the changes to address, address backlog?